All right, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. If you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight. I know it's one of the nicer nights outside. We'll spend it inside, but that's all right. As we go through the meeting, please remember our mission and our vision as we make decisions and look at our agenda throughout the evening. Call the meeting to order. Looks like we do have a quorum. No hearing of delegations or communications to the boards. So correct? All right. Then we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thanks, Tom. Do we have a second?
I'll s- go ahead.
Second.
Whoever likes to. Thank you, Andrea. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. You should have received the consent items with your packet late last week, so if you've had a chance to look them over and you'll see some additional bills that Lisa has put in front of you also. Any quick notations about anything?
Yeah. Revenues and expenditures. See expenditures, seventeen million, one hundred forty-one thousand. Revenues nineteen million, six hundred eighty thousand. Large discrepancy between those two. That's not abnormal in June as we have to continue to pay out salaries for the summer, but revenues...
Still revenue and expenses.
Yeah. But it does look good. It does look like we will have a surplus. We forecasted little to no surplus for the year, so right now we would say things look very good for the year-to-date.
It does. Any other comments or anybody have questions on the consent items? Sure we'll talk a little bit more about financial review and your report, Joe. So if not hearing none, I need a motion then to approve consent items.
So moved.
Thanks, Lanny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Andrea, we have a motion and a second and any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent items are approved. Let's move right on to your report, Joe.
Yes, sir. With some ISAS data, the Iowa statewide assessment of student progress, which our students in grades three through eleven take in the spring. Mrs. Aishen has really dug into the most recent data. Thirteen of twenty-one data points. So data points, we talked about ELA, math and science, although science is not taken at every grade level. So that gives us twenty-one different data points. Thirteen of those grew from last year. Now, keep in mind, last year fifteen of the twenty-one grew. That becomes more and more difficult to continue to grow. And that's what we're running into now is as we have had probably three-plus years of really good achievement data on our ISAS, but we still had thirteen grow. Now, seven of those twenty-one data points are over eighty percent proficiency, highlighting some of those as our fifth grade ELA, eighty-four percent; sixth grade ELA, eighty percent; sixth grade math, eighty-four percent; seventh grade ELA, eighty-seven; seventh grade math, eighty-seven; eighth grade ELA, ninety-one; eighth grade math, eighty-five. Those are really fantastic numbers. If you get above eighty percent, you know, you're doing really, really fantastic things. So really proud of our students and our staff that continue to grow that data. We use that data in a lot of different ways. It gives us areas to grow as well. And Mrs. Aishen shares a lot of that stuff with you and will continue to. Financial review. Like I mentioned, our revenues versus expenditures continue to look strong. Large discrepancy between those two. Those numbers will balance out in the next month as Lisa closes out the year. We forecasted a small surplus, but it looks like we will have one, which is great. We're projected to end the year with a general fund solvency of nine point six-two percent. The Iowa Association School Board's year-end target, seven to seventeen. So the cash that we have in comparison to the revenues we get per year equals nine point six percent of that. So that's a good measure of your financial health. Another common measure of financial health is your unauthorized UAB ratio, which ours is twenty-four point seven percent. The year-end target is seven to seventeen. Ours is high. We know that's growing. So that's not cash. That is authority. So it's cash plus some authority included from the year before, which allows you to deficit spend, is what it does. And we know through 2028, when we get out into those years, that we will have a large UAB ratio. We will have a large fund balance and we'll be in a position to deficit spend. So we're in a very good position financially and some of our health indicators look like we'll end the year as we anticipated in a really good place.
Is our board goal ten percent?
In UAB?
Or our ratio or solvency or our...
Um, no. I think it's...
UAB was a minimum of ten percent.
Ten to eighteen, wasn't it?
I think that's in our UAB.
Where is?
Our solvency is about eight, eight percent is our fund balance.
Okay.
Ten percent for UAB.
Okay.
I knew we were above both of those because I had those in there. Stuff later on.
Also, good to see all those. I mean, middle school used to be a concerned area. We can see really growth.
Lot of growth there. That's a lot of work that they've done specifically in interventions. They call it their rise time where specific interventions for areas of ELA or areas of math that they know they need growth in. They really targeted those this year, building-wide and grade-level-wide, and tremendous results from that. So awesome job by our middle school.
Sure is.
Board retreat. Put this in the memo as well. August sixth, seventh, eighth, also fifth. I think the sixth looks like probably is our date. If you have a conflict with the sixth, let me know. Otherwise, we'll start to lock that in for a possible date. That is the corresponding week that we've ended in the last two summers as well. It seems really hard to find a place to do that.
What time are you thinking?
Six.
I don't know if I put a time out there. It's been in the evening.
It's usually two hours when we just need to decide what works for people arriving.
I'll send something out in this week's memo, lock in the date and some possible times.
Any other questions for Joe? All right. We'll move on to old business then. We've got to approve second reading of policies.
These are the second readings that we also had last month. The first is the five oh three, three fines, fees and charges. Our current policy aligns with the IASB recommendation, so no changes are recommended. Five oh four, five, school fundraising. It's recommended that the policy be rescinded. From-board policy is in place in handbooks, so we plan to rescind five oh four, five and put it in our handbooks as it is, as it currently is in our handbooks. Five oh seven, eight, R1 Regulation One, Special Health Services Regulation. It's recommended that the language be updated to align with the IASB. Just due to terminology. Seven oh six, one payroll periods. Our current policy does align with the IASB recommendation, so no changes are recommended. Seven oh six, two payroll deductions. It's recommended to update language to include tax shelter, annuity information. Seven oh six, three pay deductions. Recommended to rename the policy Reduction in Employee Pay. The rest of the language does align with the IASB. Seven oh six, three Regulation One, Pay Deductions Regulation. Again, recommend to rename the policy to Reduction in Employee Pay Regulation. Seven oh seven, one Secretary's Report. Recommended to rename the policy Presentation and Publication of Financial Reports and update the language to write out the reports to submit to the board. That's already what we currently do. So that would just be changing the language to what our current practice is. Seven oh seven, two Treasurer's Annual Report. Recommended to rescind that policy as it's already covered in seven oh seven, one. Seven oh seven, three, the publication of the financial reports. Also recommended to rescind that policy as it's already covered in seven oh seven, one. And the last one is seven oh seven, four, the audit. Recommended to include the language about requests for proposals, RFPs, and the type of auditor. Any questions on those?
All fairly minor changes overall.
Yep.
We looked at the first of them last month, so any...
So we continue to stay in our cycle. We anticipated bringing a number of changes this month in regard to policies that need to be changed from legislation, and those didn't happen. So when we get to our first readings, there's only a few, but Lisa continues to keep us on schedule. So everything is always reviewed within a five-year period, which is the Iowa code calls for that to happen.
All right. Do we have any questions? And if we don't, we just need a motion to approve those readings.
Make a motion to accept those changes, so stated?
Yep. Thank you, Jay. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Thanks, Tom. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Readings approved. We go into first readings for those three weeks before next month.
And as I mentioned, we did anticipate a number of others. Those didn't come from IASB, so we just have three, which would be in our typical schedule. They are five oh three, oh four, the good conduct rule. There's no changes with that as it does align with the IASB recommendation. Five oh three, oh five corporal punishment, a new name for that being corporal punishment, mechanical restraint and prone restraint. And five oh three, oh six, the physical restraint and seclusion of students. No changes. It's our policy, our current policy aligns with the recommendation. First reading of those, no actions needed today.
Any discussion before we pass? Move on. All right. We'll move on to, continue to move on to new business. We'll be looking at business. Special Ed Director sharing.
Southeast Valley has inquired if we'd be willing to sell twenty percent of our special education director's contract for the 2024, 2025 school year. That's one day per week. Last year Manson Northwest Webster owned forty percent, two days per week. They are going to back that up to one. So it would be the same amount of time. Manson with one day, Southeast Valley with one day, three days in the Algonquin District. We also received operational sharing dollars from sharing of a special ed director in the amount of twenty-three thousand. So I would recommend the sharing agreement with Southeast Valley would do that, that one first for twenty percent, one day per week.
Make a motion to accept sharing agreement.
Thank you. Jay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Lanny. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sharing agreement approved. We'll move on to the next one with Manson.
So the same agreement stays on the screen, which again is point six FTEs with the Algonquin District, point two with Manson, point two with Southeast Valley. So this is approving sharing twenty percent with the Manson Northwest Webster District, which is a reduction from last year. They were forty percent last year.
I make a motion to approve that sharing agreement.
Andrea, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So, Lanny, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seems like the sixty percent worked well for us last year, too.
Worked well for us. Mr. Hager did a great job in really cleaning up a lot of our special education data that we report to the state that results in funding for the district. Has worked hard to establish some consistency in the goals we write in special education throughout the whole district. That's work that we keep working on. So it has worked well for us.
All right. We have a motion and a second then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sharing agreement approved with Manson. Let's move on to teacher librarian sharing agreement.
Yep. This is an agreement we have had for, I think this will be the third year. You are required to have a licensed school librarian in your school district. We share point zero five FTE of our school librarian, Nicole Welly, with Westman Mallard. One day per month is really what we call that. And that fulfills their obligation, but keeps her in our district as we really need her to be. So this is a sharing agreement as we have had in the past to share point zero five percent of Ms. Welly with the Westman Mallard District.
Seems like not much change in there, so need a motion then to approve.
So moved.
Thanks, Jay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sharing agreement approved. Another one that we've consistently done over the past years is nursing services.
Consoant Regional Health Center provides the nursing service for the Algonquin Community School District. The agreement allows for employees of KRC to be physically present on the premises of the school or immediately within a mobile call for seven hours a day when classes are in session or additional time, such as registration, for example, or other school functions. So a total of fifteen hundred hours in the school year. That's the same agreement that we've had for a number of years. The agreement has gone up one percent in the last four years. And then this year it does go five percent. It's tough for me to bring to you an increase that would be greater than what our staff receives as an increase in compensation. However, it's really six percent over five years is what the increase is. So I do think that's fair. And for the amount of one hundred, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-six, I think it's a good agreement financially. The work they do for us is very, very good and very happy with the agreement and the collaboration that we have.
Yep. Ever since Doug, it's worked well since we started with this.
It's worked well. We are really great people who come and work for us and serve our buildings, and I certainly would recommend you doing that.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none then. I need a motion for approval. Sorry.
I do a motion to approve the nursing services agreement.
Thanks, Tom. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Lanny. We have a motion and a second. Now, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Opposed? Sharing agreement approved. Put on my glasses so I can see the next one. Approve resolution transfer for the athletic.
Iowa code allows school districts to transfer funds from the general fund to the activity fund with a board resolution. The resolution transfers fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-four cents. It's a very specific amount because that is the amount that we spent on protective and safety equipment in activities this past school year. This is the same transfer that we've made the past three school years. It's a relief for our activity fund is what it is. And when we have the opportunity to do that, I think I certainly would recommend the transfer of fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars from the general fund to the student activity fund.
I make a motion to approve that transfer.
Thank you, Andrea. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, thanks, Jay. We have a motion and a second. Now, any further discussion? Oh, thank you for reminding me of that.
As long as we have sufficient unspent balances, cash balances, I will always approve this. If we ever become tight in budget, this is an area where student activity funds need to increase their records to raise funds.
Yeah, I agree with you, Tom. When we, when it is tighter, when negotiations are tighter and raises in compensation are more difficult, this is an area that we would not have to do.
Do we get a breakdown of where the money goes specifically?
I actually do. I have a spreadsheet of that. I'll give you some examples. Catcher's square here in softball, batting helmets, football helmets, reconditioning of our shoulder pads. That's where a lot of that comes from. But that, we do get a spreadsheet from the activities department. That gives us the penny by penny of where that comes from.
Good discussion to have. Any other? All right. Hearing none. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. Thank you. That was only like three seconds ago, so of course I could be it.
Davis.
Yes.
Limbaugh.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Benzi.
Yes.
Thank you for that, Lisa. All right. We'll then move into approve the fieldhouse change orders.
I have a document on the screen that has the change orders. I will explain those the best that I can as well. There's a number of change orders. Most of these we knew were coming as in the development and the planning, design parts were not complete at bid time or that we knew there were going to be adjustments to, and I'll explain that. We were anticipating the project cost to be thirteen point one million prior to the bids. The bids came in below that, which is great, to about twelve point eight million. The total cost of the change orders that I'm going to recommend today takes it up to that thirteen. Certainly have the dollars to do this, and I'll explain what some of those change orders are. The first is a ninety-one thousand dollar change order, about a third of it. And that's a water retention pond that is required by city code. That wasn't in the initial, drawings wasn't in the initial plan. In working with the city to have that plan approved, they had to add that in. So that's ninety-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars.
And that is, after doing some research on that, our city has a very extremely, extremely, I would say not punitive, but a lot farther, goes a lot farther in that determination of water retention than most places. So it's affecting our project greatly.
Yep, it is. It is. And it's taken us a long time to get to where we've had that part approved, but we do have our plan approved with that change order. The second change order is a delete, subtraction from weight room four. That was in the original bid. That will be on separately. The third is revised rooftop unit location. So the air handling units on the roof, where they were originally put in the drawing, they have to change those. That change requires some different structural pieces. So that change order is six thousand dollars. Additional steel for the translucent panels. It really was just unknown at the time of design what would be needed for the design of the translucent panels on the front. That additional steel change order is for twenty-seven thousand dollars. Additional weight equipment supports. This is for the curtains in the fieldhouse area so we can partition it off. Again, just not enough information known on the weight of those supports for the curtains and that additional supports is for change order of seventeen thousand. Foundation modifications. Again, this is an additional steel. As they finalized the specifics of the additional steels, eighteen thousand. These other ones are easier to explain. Changes in the renovated area. The change of the middle school library from, we have two current wrestling rooms, a two mat room and a one mat room. Changed the location of the middle school library to the one mat room, which has a much taller ceiling, which creates some costs and some expenses to that. That change order is forty-two thousand. Changes to the outdoor athletic area. The original plan had a new shot and a new discus area. We knew that it was going to have to expand into one competition shot, one competition discus, but then practice ones along with it so that we can have our middle school kids, high school kids, girls, boys, all on there at the same time. So that change to those areas is sixty-one thousand. Changes to the long jump relates in addition to the indoor long jump. We have to have a cover over the long jump pit for safety reasons because a lot of the times that facility will be used not as a track facility but practices and other types of events. That fabricated indoor steel cover is sixteen thousand for that. Add a medicine ball wall in our weight room. Those are all interior walls and they're sheet rocked walls. And a common exercise is the use of weight balls thrown against walls. That won't work on a regular sheet rocked wall. So they have to reinforce one of those. It works currently in our weight room because we have block walls like we do in here. So to reinforce that is a fourteen thousand change order. And the last one off the northeast part of the building for us to give water to our middle school practice field and to move that current storage building, which wasn't in the original plan, but we knew would have to happen, that change order is twenty-five thousand. So the total of those is three thousand, three hundred, five thousand, two hundred and forty-two, which puts the project up to thirteen one, which is where we thought it would be. I also talked to you in a memo about the change of our structure from a category two to a category three. That comes from a discrepancy from the drawings to the specifications. The drawings of our project call for category two. The specifications call for a category three. Our general contractor bid for a category two. By law, specifications override drawings. In the addendums that were given in the bidding process, there was five different addendums. That change was never identified in the addendums. Addendums override specifications. So, long story. The architect and the general contractor are working out what the cost of that change order, who will be covering that, but I'll go to schools right now and be responsible for that.
Is that an insurance category rating, maybe?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I know those have changed a lot in the last couple of years, too.
So the change orders that I have listed for a total of three hundred and five thousand, I do recommend those, those change orders. And we hope that's the end of those as we move through our project. Had a progress meeting with our general contractor architects last week. We are behind schedule. Weather has put us behind schedule. I told them to give me a concrete number that I could share with the board. They said three to four weeks. So that's what I'm sharing with you. But we are putting, they've started the process of putting some footings in. Most of the underground pipe has been put in, not completely, but it's close. So once that works done, we get a lot closer to things going above the ground.
I thought from what I've seen a little bit, they've made pretty progress with all the weather.
Yeah. Last week was a good week, even though we had the one really heavy day. They still got a lot done after that, Wednesday and Thursday. So just the weather puts them not just behind here, but where they were coming from to here, they're behind. And it's just a multiplying effect, but they hope they can make that time up in other places.
I understand unforeseen things, but if you've been in communication with Kingland and Atur, then I mean, we're really not, I mean, if you improve this, you know, this three hundred grand, we're really not anticipating additional.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I've been in contact with them. Some of those other change orders, I was not comfortable bringing to you guys for recognition. And that's what led us to where we are. Their understanding of our perspective in this, there was an error made. I just don't believe it was made by other schools.
And they don't anticipate, like, so some of these, like, additional steel because they didn't understand kind of some of the requirements?
Yeah. That stuff's done now, right? You know, the specifications, drawings, so we are locked into these numbers. So we should be good.
Questions? Any further discussion? We need a motion then to approve the change orders in front of us.
So moved.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Lanny. We have a motion and a second. And I think we had our discussion, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Change orders approved. All right. We approve Lisa to do our year-end payment.
Year-end payment authorization, we need to approve to have Lisa Chapman pay June bills as they're due to help with our year-end process before the twime meeting. This is a typical authorization that we use in June to finish out the school year. So I recommend authorizing Lisa Chapman to pay June. So I recommend authorizing Lisa Chapman to pay June bills as needed.
All right, we have a motion to authorize that.
So moved.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
Second to the motion.
Thanks, Tom. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Looking at school fees.
I've attached and have on the screen a document that this would be, I have it, this is 24-25, but it would be the same fees that we've had this past year. And really, we haven't changed those fees since 2019-20. I would recommend keeping the fees the same once again. However, I want to tell you that we will need to revisit the lunch portion of this in July or August. As federal guidelines change, these numbers change. We really aren't complete with our nutrition fund budget for the next school year. That's something working with Todd are on, so I think it is likely that we will see a slight increase, you know, looking at nickels, nickels and dimes to some of these things. As we all know, food prices are changing, and that impacts our work in the final lunch program as well. I would recommend keeping all of our fees the same for the 24-25 school year, knowing that we will revisit breakfast and lunch prices in the coming months.
It's hard to want to raise the food prices, but where else can you go have lunch for $2.85?
I think you're right. There's no doubt about that. I think it's still a very good value, and I know as we finish out the year, work that Lisa and Danelle and Steph do, and we still have families who are struggling to pay it. So we have debt that we work to collect at the end of every year, not just in the nutrition fund, but in all of our fees, which is always a concern. And knowing that, tough for me to come and ever say to increase these numbers, too.
Well, I think we've talked about this in the past with the board. We don't want to increase them unless we absolutely would have to for a reason. So that's good news. We need a motion then to approve the school fees in front of us with the option to revisit the lunch and breakfast.
So moved.
Jay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Angie. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? School fees approved. Open enrollment, there's just a few to look at.
We have three open enrollment applications that have met the approval guidelines. As we've discussed in previous months, open enrollment law changes July 1st. Anything that we approve from that point on before March 15th will be for the following school year. Although you do have the option, you could approve things for next year or for immediately, but that isn't typically a recommendation that I will bring to you. So these three have all met guidelines, and I do recommend their approval.
We're down. What's CAM? Is that the online?
It is an online.
Okay.
CAM Anita is an actual school district that also has an online program in the state of Iowa.
Okay.
All right, good question. Any other discussion?
Do we allow people, if they're open enrolling, to an online? Can they partake in our activities or no?
State law says you have to. You have to allow it.
But we don't, we're not counted for our enrollment, though, right?
Correct.
We're not being paid.
Well, you're right. No.
We are.
No, they would open enroll there, so their enrollment money would go there.
With them.
Yep, but in that case, the resident district has to provide activities. That is not a situation actually that we've ever had, although I do know it takes place in other parts of the states more frequently, but that could occur. Very good question.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we need a motion then to approve open enrollments.
So moved.
Thanks, Angie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Andrea, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Open enrollment's approved. Looks like we're looking at resignations.
We have one resignation, Jenna Proftman, non-public teacher associate.
All right, we need a motion to approve the resignation.
I make a motion to approve the resignation.
Thanks, Tom. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yep, thanks. Andrea, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resignation approved. We have a dismissal to look at.
Yeah, we have one employee who I recommend dismissal from their employment in the Algonquin Community School District.
Make the motion to dismiss that employee.
I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dismissal approved. And now the contracts.
Three contracts. Courtney Stroman, Middle School Family and Consumer Science. Grace Herbst Ulmer, Middle School Student Senate, and Baylor Rocho for custody, night custody.
At this building?
Yep, at the high school.
Are we filled then back with custodians?
We are filled. We are filled back up.
All right, then, we need a motion to approve the contracts.
So moved.
Thank you. Angie, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Jay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Contracts approved. Thank you for going through the agenda tonight. Pretty good. I know we're a little shorthanded, and it went pretty well, so I thank you, everyone. We'll do a roll call, but we are going to go into closed session. Need a motion to go into closed session, 21.51I to evaluate the superintendent's performance review. We need a motion?
I'll make a motion. We're going to closed session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. A motion and a second. Just recall, roll call, right?
Davis.
Yes.
Limbaugh.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Betsy.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
All right, we are in closed session. We'll give everybody a chance to kind of answer out, and we'll go into do the review.